Zoom.
I don't see.
Say that again.
I don't see, um, uh, shoot, Ms. Barrot.
She's there.
Oh, where?
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry. Forget.
All five commissioners on the line of wanted to start by congratulating, Commissioner Green Gold on her reappointment, which was approved by the town council last month.
Thank you.
Uh, just a reminder, the town code section ninety dash thirty-one, uh, planning commission's purposes, uh, it shall advise the town council on all matters relating to the orderly growth of the town of Chesapeake Beach. The planning commission shall consist of seven members who shall be qualified voters and/or property owners in the town. The majority of the members of the commission shall be residents of the town, and all members shall be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the town council. Members are appointed for five years, uh, according to the town code. So Commissioner Green Gold is beginning her second term. Uh, the rest, all the other commissioners are still on their first term with the commission. We currently have only five members. Uh, seven members are authorized. That means that there are two vacancies for the town to fill. I should point out that the commission must have a quorum to conduct business. A forum consists of four members, and the commission cannot take any action unless four members approve that action according to the town code. Uh, last March, the town council passed a moratorium on large construction projects and developments. The town council is eager to see the comprehensive plan completed and to lift that moratorium. Once the commission completes its work on the comprehensive plan, it will require some time for the town council to review, post it for public comment, and finally approve it. Tonight included with the agenda, I consolidated all the remaining issues of which I'm aware onto a list that's attached to the agenda. If commissioners have any other issues, please make them known. Uh, tonight, as I move down the list, I will ask if there is a motion to accept or reject each item. If there is a motion and a second, we'll first discuss the item and then vote. If there is no motion and second, then we will move on to the next item and take no action. Uh, once we complete the list, provided commissioners have no additional items from the public comment period, I will make a motion to approve the comprehensive plan and forward it to the town council for the commission to vote on. Um, so unless, uh, there's anything else, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Uh, the first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
We have approval.
Do I have a second?
No, I have a comment on the, um, the minutes of the November twenty-third meeting.
Okay, well, that's after we approve the agenda.
Okay.
All right, so all in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
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 Is that unanimous? Uh, the agenda is approved. Uh, next on the agenda is to approve the minutes for November, uh, twenty-third. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Uh, do we have a second?
Second, a second.
Okay, Commissioner Barrot, you had a comment.
I just, um, I just wanted to note on, uh, page two of the, uh, of the minutes, item number five, uh, where it says Ken Rathmussen, Green Team member, um, under four, it says natural environment. It, it then begins strongly recommends that the comprehensive plan, uh, I don't know if that got, uh, cut off because it then doesn't lead into recommendation. Um, so I, I just wanted, I don't know if it's a, it's a typo or something was dropped off. But whereas in item number six, um, it just says under the same type of heading recommends the comprehensive plan. This one just says strongly recommends that the comprehensive plan, and it's as if something is missing.
Okay, so there's, uh, some language missing, number five on the minutes is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Check that.
Uh, Sharon, does that, you see what, uh, Commissioner Barrot is discussing?
Yeah, I'll check that.
Okay. Okay, is any other comments on the minutes, any more discussion?
Um, I just on that particular, um, issue, uh, item, um, Sharon, I read it, I'm, I'm kind of confused about what you're saying because I see it as strongly recommends that the comprehensive plan recommendations include a Brownies Beach environmental survey. Do you not have that on your, on yours? Sharon? I mean, I'm sorry, Kathleen, Kathleen?
Yeah, I do.
Oh, okay, but I'm trying to, I'm confused on what we are missing on Ken's, um, comments there. It seems complete to me is why I'm questioning. It seems like.
It's the.
I agree.
I'm sorry.
That the constant, it says strongly recommends that the comprehensive plan recommendations include a Brownies Beach environmental survey, but on six, it just says recommends the con, the comprehensive plan recommendations include, maybe it's because recommendations is capitalized.
Yeah.
It looks like a, a fragment. So I, 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 I didn't say, it's not a major point. I just wanted to make sure that that, um, just, it didn't look abbreviated.
I think it's the uppercase R that you're concerned about on both, uh, five and six. If you take the, uh, R and make it, uh, a regular R, then it, it reads correctly, and I think you wouldn't be confused by it. So Sharon, I think that'd be the only suggestion is to make that R a regular R, uh, you know.
A lowercase.
A lowercase, I'm sorry, I couldn't think of, I couldn't even think of the term lowercase. But, sorry.
Okay, did we also, um, did we also vote to include Randall Cliff in that study?
Environmental study, you mean?
Yeah, I don't.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I thought it was Brownies Beach only.
Uh, yeah, I'd have to go back to be sure, but I thought we had discussed adding Randall Cliff.
Well, doesn't that Randall's Cliff come under, under number six? I think we, that's what we were thinking that, uh, under Melanie's comments, that would have been under that, but I don't remember Randall's Cliff's coming under number five under Ken's comments. So I agree, I think what, what's said there is correct.
If you look at, uh, number nine, Susan Alexander, the, the last sentence.
There you, there you go.
Also recommended including the survey.
Correct. Thank you. Thank you.
Ah, gotcha, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? All in favor of approving the minutes for the November twenty-third meeting, say aye.
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 Ayes have it? Okay. Uh, now, number four on our agenda for tonight is public comment. Uh, is there anyone that would like to make a public comment on our agenda for this evening? As it notes in the, uh, the agenda, there's a two-minute limit on comments received. So I see Mr. Blitz's hand is up. So, uh, Mr. Blitz, if you would want to go ahead.
Thank you Chairman Brown and members of the commission. Um, Happy New Year. Um, Eric Blitz, on behalf of the Rod and Real. Uh, I would like to spend my two minutes discussing the required housing element in the draft comprehensive plan. Um, as noted on pages four and five of the Maryland Department of Planning's, uh, comment memorandum, the extreme limits on infill development imposed by your draft plan are at odds with the projected growth estimates, primarily because the limits on density and housing types imposed in the center of town lead to a reduction of fifty-three percent of the town zoning capacity. Um, you know, for the past twenty-five years or so, uh, all I've ever heard in planning circles is how to emphasize infill development, uh, for, in smart growth areas. And as noted by the professional planners at Maryland Department of Planning, your draft reduces the projected twenty forty infill from three hundred and thirteen units to a mere fifty-six. It's in this context that I direct your attention to their comments on the new requirement for the housing element found on pages eight through ten. The sixty percent of HUD's area median income of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand is seventy-seven thousand, four hundred, which would be the policy guidance's definition for a low-income household. That's a renter's income, and while the types of development my client has proposed and you've placed on hold a, a slightly higher market, I strongly urge you to review the twenty twenty Maryland Housing Needs Assessment that the planners referenced for guidance to communities like Chesapeake Beach, because it tells the story much better than I can. There is a strong value to providing market rate multifamily dwellings as a means of freeing up other housing stock to meet affordable housing needs. In Chesapeake Beach, that's not going to be your thirty percent of AMI households. Uh, you'll never satisfy those, um, but the key demographic that you can satisfy is working families, including those in the workforce housing concept in those plans. Um, and as the Maryland Office of Planning indicated, increasing the supply within the market has the effect of meeting your housing element requirements because a larger total supply contributes to meeting the broader policy goals. I ask you to consider how effectively your draft plan is meeting the goals of the housing element that's required by the two thousand nineteen General Assembly legislation. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blitz. Uh, Mr. Donovan, you have a comment?
I do. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I actually have, uh, four quick comments and questions. The first is the group that created the town's master walkability communities plan really needs to be commended on their report. It looks very sharp and is really easy to read. However, the plan doesn't address any future development within the town, which I would assume that this was done on purpose and would be left up to the planning commission to implement in the comprehensive plan draft. However, I don't see where the draft incorporates a marriage between walkability and new development. Coward County's Economic Development Commission wrote a str- strategic plan for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-four. It can be found on the county's website. On page twenty-three, it says, and I quote, pursue downtown revitalization projects that promote walkability and place making in town centers and advocate for these items to be included in master plan updates and other strategic plans for Cowards municipalities. So having said those two things, my, my question is, does there need, does there need to be put into the, into this comprehensive plan draft, something about future development and walkability rather than just the references to current conditions and other references to the report that the town's walkability communities plan created? That's my first. Second is, based on Coward County's desire to have density in the town centers and also the state's desires to have density in the town centers, this plan is going against the county and the state's desire by removing housing in the maritime districts as they are in the heart of our town. Since all of the infrastructure is already built and available, and with the redevelopment the town could become more walkable, the water runoff could get treated, thus making the bay cleaner. Why is the plan removing residential development in the maritime district? My third question is, has there been an economic study done to see what the town's property tax revenue will look like in ten years with the lower growth from this plan? And finally, this is a minor one, but the, the draft plan reads two thousand twenty-one update on the cover page. Even though the plan has been a working document since two thousand and eighteen, shouldn't that date be changed to twenty twenty-two now? That's all my, uh, questions and comments. Thank you for taking them.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't see anyone else's hand up, so. Uh, is that correct? All right, uh, so let's, uh, moving on to item number five on the agenda, we're continuing discussing the public comments that, uh, were received during the sixty-day period. Uh, I, as I said, I've tried to, uh, list them all on what I've called the chairman's list. And, uh, we completed some of them at the last meeting. Uh, if you want to go down to, uh, the beginning of what is page two of my list, uh, starting with, uh, Mr. Foltz. Uh, Mr. Foltz is, uh, we had, we had done a half a dozen, I think, of his comments at the last meeting. Uh, the first one here is on page eighty-five and eighty-six. Does the plan reconcile the statements in, uh, consideration of land use pattern that encourages multiple housing types at varying densities while proposing to restrict housing types and locations and heights? Is there a motion to, uh, accept or reject this comment?
Um, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Say, say that again.
Okay, um, so, thank you Chairman Brown. I guess my question would be, uh, of course, we're accepting the comment because we're reviewing it, but accepting the comment, what does that mean? If we make a motion to accept the comment?
Okay, do you want to make a mo, does anyone want to make a motion to change the plan to accommodate this comment or, uh, uh, and, and discuss it further?
No.
All right, hearing none, moving on to the next comment under Mr. Foltz, page ninety-two. He, uh, proposes deleting a sentence and replacing it with a sentence, basically, uh, the sentence he proposes deleting, you have it before you, you can read it. Um, but it, uh, it is effectively, uh, asking to, uh, or suggesting that, uh, we don't know what the capacity of the, uh, road constraints will be along Bayside Road in the future. And he suggests looking back to the past and inserting, uh, the traffic studies that were done in preparation for the Rod and Real Expansion Project. So do I have a motion to, uh, further discuss this? Hearing none. Moving on to the third item, page one oh nine, given the restrictive nature of this plan, what incentives does it develop for, have for beginning a development that enhances, quote, "community facilities commensurate with the expected impact of the proposed project"? Do I have a motion to further discuss this item?
I'm a little confused on that comment, actually, if I could have clarification.
Well.
What incentives does a developer have for beginning a development that enhances community fifth facilities commiserate with the expected impact of the proposed project? I'm a little confused by that. I mean, the way I look at that is, does any development, um, any, any, any particular size development incur any extra obligation as far as infrastructure such as parks, uh, extra roads or streetlights? And my, my comment would be, yes, they would be incurring any obligations that would impact the, uh, area negatively as far as infrastructure's concerns. So I guess, I, I mean, I guess that's what the comment is here. Um, is what, what would the, uh, developer have as far as obligations? I, is that what I'm seeing here? I don't, I'm, I'm a little confused on that comment. Can anybody clarify that for me or no?
Mr. Foltz. Mr. Foltz.
No longer on there, on the.
As I read it, he's asking if there are incentives built into the comprehensive plan, uh, that, uh, address the quote from page one oh nine, that community facilities should be commensurate with the expected impact of the proposed project. Um, so.
Chairman Brown?
Yeah.
Commissioner Ruck.
Yeah, um, I, I understand the statement, but, uh, asking a developer to participate in, uh, helping mitigate the effect of putting in a subdivision or what have you, whether it's sidewalks or, or what have you, is, is very common. So I'm not really understanding what he, it, it just sounds like he's not familiar with the concept. I, I mean, I, I don't mean to make it sound harsh, but I'm, it, it is very, uh, common.
Okay. So I'm hearing, I guess, that no one wants to propose a change to the comprehensive plan based on this comment.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
All right, hearing none. Uh, Commissioner Green Gold, or rather, uh, Ms. Cindy Green Gold submitted a recommendation prior to the, or during the comment period, uh, that the housing chapter include a statement that infill development should be constructed to promote small-town charm, et cetera. Uh, do we have a motion to include that statement?
I would like, uh, you know, as a commissioner, I would like to include that as one of the objectives. So I guess, can I, uh, can I approve my own comment? But I would like to recommend that our objectives be reviewed. If you want to look at them currently, we don't have anything that epitomizes pretty much what a lot of the voters asked us to do originally and when it came to housing. So as a citizen, I came forward and said, you know, we didn't include that, we need to, as far as adopting what a lot of the residents who voted for those ideas back when we had, uh, the last vote, they wanted the small-town charm, and hence, that's why I thought we should include that as one of the objectives.
All right, so Commissioner Green Gold has proposed it be included. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay, discussion. Um, my problem with that paragraph is that, uh, residents should, should know their neighbors. I don't see where that has any real place in our comprehensive plan, that we tell our residents that they should go out and know their neighbors. So I would delete and know their neighbors from that paragraph, and I make a motion that it be deleted. Do I have a second?
Uh, so it'd be feel safe and secure and be confident that their neighboring structure. So you just want to delete and know their neighbors? Is that what you want to delete?
That's what I said, yes.
I would, I'll second that.
All right, uh, any other amendments or, uh, discussion? Okay, all in favor of, uh, the amended paragraph, say aye.
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 The motion passes. Next, uh, Mr. Jakubiak, uh, had noted that, uh, a number of things, and so I'll, I think I'll pass, uh, to Chris to discuss the next five things on the list.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the first one, uh, it just encapsulates what we've talked about at prior meetings, and that we would add a, a symbol on the two-hundred-acre parcel that's, um, protected by an easement, uh, and that we'd have some text to explain it. And, um, I think we, the commission pretty much signed off on this and agreed to it, but I wasn't quite sure, so I wanted to make sure I got that one correct.
And do you, do you have the language that explains, explains that?
No, I don't, I, I didn't draft that yet, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Um, yeah, it's kind of hard to approve something that we haven't read. Um, I think that's rather, in my opinion, that's rather minor. So, uh.
I think that, sorry, Chairman Brown, may I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I think that we should call it what it is, which is a, a FIDS-protected, uh, parcel. That's searchable. You can look it up, it's legal. Uh, so if we call it what it is, I think that, uh, we can all approve it. It will be legally documented on a map and well-protected.
So what is, are you making a motion?
Yes, I, I make a motion to, um, include in the land, in the language for the protected parcel exactly what it's protected by, which is, uh, FIDS, Forest Interior Dwelling Sanctuary Covenant. Uh, include the details and, um, you know, place an icon on the map like a bird. And I think that will be very clear to everybody because it's searchable.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of making that change?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Uh, Chris, over to you, number two.
Yeah, and this is a related item that would have, uh, some text to explain the protective status on the main open spaces, uh, that surround the town's large residential subdivisions. Uh, just to clarify that some of them are forest conservation. Um, some are, or the two-hundred acres are FIDS habitat, and, uh, the rest is typically HOA open space. Um, we have a graphic already in the plan, uh, or a map, I should say, that shows these areas. Um, so what I'm suggesting is that that map, um, slightly be supported with some text that basically says, "The following are HOA open spaces, the following are forest conservation protected areas, and the remaining parcel is the FIDS habitat." Uh, and, and again, that's a, an attempt to, this, address, uh, and explain this part of the plan based on conversations we've had at prior meetings.
Okay, do we have a motion to, uh, uh, adopt that?
Chris, could I ask a question?
Yes, Commissioner Barrot. Uh.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, Chris, would this, with that text that is, um, inherent with the, um, map, would that appear as a legend on the map? Or would it just be text under it, uh, as a, as a, a caption? Or how would that appear with that map?
Yeah, I, you know, I, it could be either way. I experimented with the idea of having it as, uh, a legend by showing each of these areas with a different pattern, you know, lighter green, darker green, and a, and a, you know, hatched pattern. So, but I haven't settled on the right approach, but a, a simple explanatory way of communicating this is what I'm, I'm aiming at. Both of your ideas are satisfactory to me, and I think they both do the job. Uh, so it could be a, a caption under the map.
Okay.
If you have a preference, I'm, I'm glad to implement it, but.
I, I have a preference. I like the legend as the legend actually appears on the map face, and it's, um, it's, it's, it's a part of the map. So I, I prefer the legend rather than the, the underscore of the caption myself, but.
Okay, do we have a motion from Commissioner Barrot to amend the map with a legend?
I make the motion.
I second it.
All right, is any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of amending the map with a legend as discussed?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes. Uh, number three, providing a new map or revise the existing land use map, show the town's existing critical area boundary and its three critical area zones, and add text to describe what a, the critical area is. That seems to me is pretty administrative and, uh, pretty straightforward.
Yes, it is, and I, you know, the map exists already. Um, it's right here on the screen. Um, whoa, sorry. Let me get back to it. Um. But based on some of the discussions the planning commission had, it became obvious that it would be helpful to have this uh document within the existing conditions um under the natural resources uh topic. And uh so that it can explain the critical area. And so the, what the explanation is, is that there are three zones within the critical area or three land use class, classifications. And by the way, I think many of you know this already, the red is IDA or intensely developed area. Uh, meaning these areas are generally, have been developed and no longer function to uh protect water quality in their natural state. Uh, they're mostly developed before the critical area regulations went into effect in the 1980s. Uh, the yellow area is limited development area, and as if you know the community, you know that uh these areas that are yellow are less intensively developed, uh and they are, or not developed at all, actually, and they um uh, the development in those areas is much more limited due to a number of lot coverage restrictions. And then the green area is the resource conservation area, which I'd like to return to later and later comments. But it's the most environmentally sensitive area and hence the most restrictive in terms of development. So uh, just a simple summary of those three uh zones and this map will just add more information to the plan.
Okay, do we have a motion to include uh critical area descriptions and boundaries on the map?
I make the motion.
I second it.
Okay, any further discussion?
I do have one question.
Okay, Commissioner Blackwelder.
So, is there any concern we should have that we uh need to re-adopt the critical area in this comprehensive plan, or we need to mention it as a current plan, or is there any concern that we did not include it initially in our draft? Um. That's my question.
And Mr. Chairman, I don't have any concerns about that at all. This is an existing condition document. Um, and um it, it exists, whether it's in the comp plan or not. Um, so I, I, from my, from my perspective, I don't see it as anything substantive in terms of changes to the plan.
Okay. Any further comments? Uh, all in favor of amending the map or including a map with these critical areas descrip, description? Please say aye.
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 All right, uh, moving on to uh number, the motion passes. Uh, moving on to number four. Uh, Mr. Jakubiak, if you want.
Yeah, yeah, I'll take that. Um, so on page 66, and I'll turn to that in a moment. Uh, there's a sentence that talks about the value of the resource conservation areas and the natural resources humanity provide. Uh, and then it says that uh, in effect, the town would allow low, well, let's just turn to it. Um, I don't want to mess this up, so let me get to page 66. Okay, um, it's this paragraph here in the middle. I'm circling it now on the screen. Uh, the second sentence or the last sentence says, for this reason, um, in other words, for the reasons noted above, which include kind of the benefits of wetlands and forests and open space and the natural allure of Chesapeake Beach. We recommend that the resource cons, conservation areas do not permit residential land use and that they are instead maintained in their natural pristine and natural form. Uh, allowing only for, under very stringent requirements, low impact access rec, uh, access recreation and commercial activities through the town's growth allocation method. And the last phrase is what I, I'd like to call your attention to, through the town's growth allocation method. Um. The growth allocation method is a technique or provision in the critical area regulations that allow for the resource conscious conservation area, the green areas on the map that I just showed, to be changed to yellow. Or for the yellow areas to be changed to red. In other words, it's an upzoning of environmentally sensitive areas to permit development in areas that your plan generally would not want to see development. So to me, it, it raises some concerns that uh, you're suggesting that uh, under certain limitations, you would allow for recreational, commercial activities to come about through changing the critical area status of the most sensitive environmental areas in town. Um, so it, I think this sentence works just fine if you put a period after the word activities and, and leave this growth allocation method out.
Yeah.
So Chris, did we take some property that was in the IDA and turn it back into resource conservation?
No.
Well, we did not.
No, we're, the, um. The term resource conservation is used uh within the critical area regulations, and it has a special term of art. It's a, one of the three zoning, three zones in the critical area. Um, but it's also a term that we use when we deal with the land use. So we have a land use category called resource conservation.
Right.
Uh, and so we have shown areas that are zoned for maritime uh and that are proposed, that are critical area IDA, and we're recommending that the land use category be changed to resource conservation. Um, we're not suggesting that the critical area um be changed. That's, if you follow me, Lori.
I, it's, it's very confusing because
Yep.
we already took land or already had it zoned in the critical area as an IDA, I believe. And now we're taking that and we're calling it resource conservation, and there are some landowners that have a concern that that's a taking. So is that a taking or is it not, if we're not going to allow some process for um low impact relief?
Okay, that's um it's kind of zero in on that. I, I, I can think of one example. I, and this map, uh, I think we'll get a little detail. Okay, let's go. Um. There is a parcel of ground right here where the hand is, that's shown as IDA. And there is a parcel of ground right through here that is shown as IDA. They're both red on the map. And they're, they're classified in the zoning, or in the critical area map as IDA. Uh, our recommended plan, land use plan, however, recommends that they be resource conservation. And es- essentially, that means that their development potential is limited, but it's not extinguished by any means. In fact, th- the plan says that uh continued use for marina, low intensity marina activities, fishing, um, um, those types of industries may continue and can, the property can be continued to be used in that way. But the, the plan acknowledges that these areas are most vulnerable to flooding and sea level rise, and so that uh, the recommendation is essentially uh no more development. In other words, the town is not going to extend its water and sewer facilities uh or rely on public roads to service this area uh if in light of the environmental conditions that underlie that. So um, in answer to the question, no, I, it's not, in my view, a taking. I guess one could argue always that point. Um, but you're certainly within your um within your authority as a planning commission to recommend that the use of these properties be um something other than um, in, intensive development. Um, in fact, you're basically recommending that they, they uh not be or that they continue to, in their current use, that they not be developed in the way that puts additional people, in other words, housing or uh additional infrastructure at risk of of inundation by flooding.
Okay, uh, is there any other discussion? Do we have a motion to?
No, I, I, can I, uh, Chairman Brown, can I just go right back to that um sentence? Uh, Chris, if you can take a look at that sentence now. So you want to take out uh through town's growth allocation method? Is that what you want to take out?
Yes.
Okay, so if you go back to the beginning of the sentence, um, we recommend that the resource conservation areas do not permit residential land use and that they are instead maintained in their most pristine and natural form, allowing only for under very stringent requirements, comma, there should be a comma there, low impact access, comma, recreation and commercial activities. So in other words, we need to, we need to put some commas in there to separate out the dependent clause under very stringent requirements. So if you can make a few comma adjustments, I'd appreciate it.
Well, do we have a motion to make those uh, to make those changes? I don't, we haven't heard that yet.
Okay, well, I would like, uh, let's see, do we have a, okay, it was the first motion to just take out the town's growth allocation, Chairman Brown? Is that the first?
We hadn't made a motion yet. I was just.
No motion has been made. We're already into the.
Okay, I, I would like to include then in that motion to take that out. I would like to include a comma after requirements and access.
So.
As I understand it.
Let me read it. Under very stringent requirements, low impact access to, to rec, it should be access to recreation and commercial activities, actually TO. So it should be under very stringent requirements, comma, low impact access to recreation and commercial activities.
All right, so you're making a motion to delete the through town's growth allocation method phrase and add the commas that you mentioned. Is that correct?
Well, one comma and then the word two, but Laura, you had a comment about that?
Uh, hold it, I'll, on the meeting, thank you.
Sorry.
Um, so I'm, I'm looking for the motion of what, what we're deciding here. No one has made a motion.
Make a mo, I make a motion to, that we remove town's growth and allocation method and then add the identified comma as well as the word two.
All right. I second that.
Do we have a, we have a second?
Yes, you do.
Further discussion? I think Commissioner Blackwelder had something to say.
Yes, I would like to say that leaving the, the phrase, the town's growth allocation method is adding protection rather than eliminating it. The growth allocation me, method requires a public hearing. It requires a town council hearing to approve development in those areas, and if you remove it and add the comment, the you know, if we, if we remove that phrase and then keep the sentence, the way we're talking about amending it right now, we are eliminating protection. And I, I would just say that I like the phrase the way it is. I like the added protection of the hearings. I like the ability of um, the landowners to have that opportunity to plead their case and leave it up to a hearing.
Chris, uh, did you want to uh respond?
Um. Well. If, if that is the case, then the paragraph needs to be restructured entirely to, so it's clear that the focus is on resource conservation zones within the critical area. Okay, because you don't use the critical area allocation method to allow anything to happen on areas that are already IDA. Um, so it's, it's, as it's drafted now, it's not really a, a statement that holds together quite well. It's just but if we're talking about the possibility of changing areas that are currently uh resource conservation in the critical area, and we're talking about changing, allowing development in those most restrictive parts of the critical area. And I don't think we are, but if we are, then yes. Keep the town's allo, growth allocation method in place. I mean, that's what we would do anyway. But, but it begs the question, because as you read it, someone who knows the way this works, someone reads it and says, oh, well, they're open to um rezoning these green areas to allow development. Um. If, if you are, then that's fine, but I, please tell me, because if, if that's the case, allow me a, a couple of days to restructure the paragraph to make it accurate, uh, to reflect that. Or to, to, does the planning commission want to use the authority it has with, along with the town council to upzone these green areas to allow?
No.
There?
No.
Okay, so if that's the case, I would just ask that you consider my suggestion to remove the growth allocation, through the growth allocation method.
But Chris, um, Chairman?
Yes, uh, Commissioner Braw.
Um, is it, is it true, Chris, thank you Chairman Brown, is it true though that uh what Commissioner Blackwelder, uh, Wilder has made the comment that by, you said that the town's growth and allocation method is a technique. Um, and in the application of this technique, does it call for a, a hearing uh for approval and that without it, it does not? Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, um, so. Right, if, if, if a developer or if, if a landowner who owned land in the green areas on that map wanted to develop, they would petition the town for growth allocation. And it would go through two public hearings, the town ca, so, and first the planning commission, the town council, and then the critical area commission in Maryland, uh, in Annapolis would hold a hearing too, before giving final approval. Which is to say that those areas that are green on the map are protected by multiple layers of, of, of approval.
Uh, Chris?
Yep.
I'm sorry, Chairman Brown? Chairman Brown?
Commissioner Ruckey.
If, Chris, if I understand what you're saying is that that if we leave it in, there's an opportunity for somebody to in the green area um develop? Whereas if that was not in there, they couldn't? I mean, I'm trying to get, get to the essence of of what you just said.
Um. The there's very little opportunity to develop in the town's resource conservation areas. Um. And as I said, that they would require a, a growth allocation. Um. But I don't think that this is discussing, I thought that this is discussing resource conservation as our land use. We're, we're proposing a land use category called resource conservation, like the town always has, and it, it's talking about developing in those areas. Um, for instance, um. Um, I mean, it might, it might help just for me to find the, the land use plan map here. Um, okay, so. The green areas are resource conservation, so there are some areas here, you know, or up here that are resource conservation. These are forested hillsides. Okay, these are not in the critical area. So growth allocation is not applicable. Um, there's, there's no use for growth allocation. It's just not a, something you use outside of growth area. Um, so the recommendations that we have in the plan and the zoning amendments that would follow, zoning map amendments would be sufficient.
Um, but Chris? It, is that? is the reason that area can't be developed any further without any type of protection is because of the topography of that area? Does it lend itself to development?
Are you referring to maybe the areas that I was just pointing to?
Yes, you said they're forested, they're, they wouldn't be developed. Is that because of the topography of that area as opposed to an area that doesn't have that, that is still in, in the identified as green, but potentially would have the capacity, the capacity because it's differently structured to be developed?
Yeah, so those areas that I was just referring to in most cases could be developed under current regulations, which would involve development on steep slopes and the removal of forests and mass grading. But the plan as it's drafted now sees those conditions and says the town doesn't, doesn't want to see development in those areas. So the zoning recommendation, the zoning standards that would be adopted would effectively say no zoning or no, no development in those areas. So I, again, they're outside of the critical area. They're protected then just by the municipal zoning, not by the critical area overlay.
I'm struggling. If you want to take this, tell me again why you think it's not appropriate for the town to have that state?
That in the gist of it is, I don't think that it's consistent with your plan to see the green areas and the yellow areas on this map developed.
Right.
I mean, they're, they're developed already, this, the yellow areas, but to see them developed more intensively. I don't, and the growth allocation method is the process that you use to allow that to take place. So talking about resource conservation areas and making sure they stay in place, why even mention that? Why even suggest that the town's open to using the growth allocation method unless you are?
I see, I see, okay.
So Chris, in the way that we have comprehensively planned and the wording that we have in those areas, if somebody wants to propose any kind of development, what processes do we have in place to ensure that it's development that would be supported and that we are not boxed in to support development that we wouldn't want?
Yeah. It's a, it's a big question. Trying to organize my thinking here a bit, Lori. The, I guess the simple answer is, is that there's very little development that is allowed in these areas. First, because of the environmental conditions, a lot of them are simply marshes and wetlands, can never be developed, they're protected as wetlands. But shorelines and maybe areas that are outside, they're protected by the critical area regulations that substantially limit how much development you can do or what you can actually do. There's and if, if someone wanted to do something other than, say, put a pier out or build a trail or a platform for holding a gazebo, you know, I'm giving you examples, if they wanted to do something more than that, they would have to come to the planning commission and petition for a growth allocation. And the planning commission would have to hold a public hearing, would have to establish findings of fact and hold a public hearing and send a recommendation to the mayor and council. They would have to hold a public hearing and make a decision. They basically would be deciding to allow a carve out of these green areas to make them red or yellow, in other words, to make them developable. And then the last step would be that the critical area commission in Annapolis would have to make a decision too.
But I guess, Chris, can I just ask, so is the town growth and allocation method identified in that sentence, does it give greater protection or not?
Not in the, in the context of that sentence, it doesn't make sense, is what I'm saying. But it does provide, no, no, listen, think of it this way, the growth allocation method is a relief valve from someone who would want to develop land who otherwise could not. It's a technique that allows the town to give something that the person doesn't have. It's a, it's a vehicle for a very difficult process, but it's a process to give somebody the ability to develop that they otherwise don't have.
So it's a, it would be a gateway to development?
Right, it's a gateway to development in environmentally sensitive areas.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, if if we permit it without the phraseology of the growth allocation method, we have a gateway with no gateway.
Huh?
It's protected, the area is protected. The, the town, as Chris just explained, that the towns growth and allocation method allows the door to be open for development in that area. Whereas if it's not, then you don't have that doorway, that avenue to pursue development.
Okay, so if that doorway's shut, that's one thing, but if the doorway's still open, then we would want people to have to jump through those hoops. And so the question is, is the doorway shut or is it open? In the way that, that our code and our comprehensive plan is written. And so if it's written so that it's open, then we should leave the phraseology of the growth allocation method. But if it's written so that it's shut, I'm fine with keeping it shut as long as it's not a taking. And, and, you know, our board is only as good as the professional advice that we get.
So Chris, if I understand it correctly, this, this paragraph, even if the town council accepts it as written, that's not going to change whether the growth allocation is allowed or not allowed. It still has to go into a zoning code, correct?
Yes, it's, and the growth allocation method is enshrined in state law. It's, it's in our code by virtue of that. And it's not changed one way or the other based on this statement.
So the, so the paragraph you're suggesting is just inconsistent because at the beginning it says, we don't want this developed, but then at the end we say, but you can develop it if you like by going through the growth allocation method.
Yes, that's, that's essentially.
So you're trying to eliminate the, you're suggesting we eliminate the inconsistency?
Yes, I'm trying to get to a more consistent statement and also one that's aligned with the plan generally.
Okay, okay, I think everybody's had their say. We have a motion, I think, to, didn't we get a motion to eliminate that? And I think Commissioner Braw made that, Commissioner Rutke, I believe, seconded.
Right, right.
So is all in favor of removing it and adding the commas that Commissioner Greengold suggested? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes. Moving on to number five, encourage the commission to revise a statement which is under the heading plans and vulnerabilities zones, you'll have to explain this one, Chris.
Yes, okay. That's on page 50, I believe, of the plan.
Page 50, you say?
Yes, page 50. Last paragraph on page 50. I have it on the screen now. It's under the heading plans for vulner, vulnerability zones. It, the first sentence, it says that the town should adopt master plans or detailed plans for each of the three areas that will be impacted by sea level rise. And then it says, until such plans are adopted, the town should postpone formal review and approval of development plans in those areas. Okay, which, as you know now, that is effectively a language that speaks to a moratorium, basically saying, we're recommending that a moratorium continue again until another three plans are done. We drafted this a long time ago and and since then, we developed the whole land use section in an approach to dealing with development within areas impacted by sea level rise. And we call it layers, we have three layers. And so the land use chapter now has direction on how to deal with these three areas. And it assumes the town will complete and do a, a master plan or master plans for these areas. But it doesn't say the town would not entertain in application until those plans are done. It's, in other words, instead it says, the town will insist that the developer really demonstrate that the project fits in with any effort to protect sea, to protect against sea level rise and study the issue and partner with the town to make sure that any project is compatible with our, with sea level rise issues. And so what I would suggest is this here on the screen, that page 50 end with this, until such plans are adopted, the town will insist that developers provide robust analyses of future flooding vulnerability as part of any development application and build in a manner that mitigates overall flood risk. So this is a really strong policy statement and it's consistent with the land use plan. So that's.
We have a motion from a commissioner to adopt this language.
Yes.
Okay, so Commissioner Rutke makes the motion to adopt the language proposed by Mr. Jakubiak, do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay, Commissioner Braw, seconds.
Question.
Any further discussion?
Question. Chris, do we, do we need to be a little more specific on mitigates overall flood risk? Is that overall flood risk to that project? Or, I mean, do we want to be more specific on what you mean by overall flood risk?
I have a comment.
Can we finish with Commissioner?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I, in, in using the word overall rather than say project specific flood risk, I wanted to make it clear that we have to approach these things systematically. And, and of course, when, once a plan is adopted, everybody that builds within the plan area is building to the plan. And that's the ideal, just like if we were building a road system, everybody would build to the standard road system. But if before we have that, that plan in place, we'd have to just insist that we have the best information available and that it's clear to you, which would be the planning commission, making a decision that you have all the information you need to make a decision about whether the project's mitigating overall flood risk. In other words, if it's fixing its own problem, but water is going to flow over the property and flood the people, then we want to be able to deal with that in the beginning, even if the dealing with it is a denial. You know, we have to be able to deal with that. So that's, that's the gist of this.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Blackwelder, you had a comment?
Um, yes, I believe the planning commission, the Maryland planning commission was in strong support of leaving that phrase in place. And I don't know that this phrase that Chris has proposed is strong policy guidance. It's very ambiguous. I would be for having more concrete master planning in the, in the maritime and town center zones so that we know exactly what we're approving. And additionally, the planning, the Maryland planning commission pointed out that they did not support intense development near the marshy areas and the flood areas. And I, I think that we have made the right decision, even though that the commission didn't request that that phrase be put in there and you put it in there yourself, Chris, the Maryland Department of Planning supported that statement. And there are areas that are sensitive to flooding and sensitive to various environmental conditions, such as Ellicott City, that have been under moratoriums for longer periods of time in order to properly address the built environment. And I, I think that the area surrounding Fishing Creek absolutely warrants a statement like that.
I have another question, please, Chairman Brown.
Greengold, go ahead.
Chris, do we need any language that would indicate that it would be an analysis done by an objective? I mean, would we necessarily trust a developer to bring in any analyses? Or do we want to make it more specific on the type of analysis? Like, is there a society of, I mean, is there a certain group that does this that would be a bona fide, reliable group instead of just saying a robust analyses? I mean, that to me seems like, well, let me just get my college kid, you know, family member to do an analysis and that'll be it. I mean, I'm just wondering if we need a little bit tighter language, if we're going to put language in there? Or is that something that's just not necessary in a comprehensive plan? I don't know.
Yeah, I, 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 I would tend to agree with the latter point you're making. That it's just, the more we drill down and get specific, we're almost writing a, a regulation here and of course, they have the authority of regulations still.
Okay.
Policy.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, anyone else? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. We've completed discussion.
I'm sorry, I was muted and I had a question to ask.
Okay, Commissioner Rutke.
Okay. Can you, Lori, can you repeat, other than the fact that it, that this area was approved by the Maryland State Planning, what do you think we're losing if we change that wording?
I think we're losing, we're, we're going to get development proposals and we have this very ambiguous language that says the developer needs to provide analysis. We have no criteria, we have no guidelines. That is what the flood study and a master plan in that area would provide. And I think that to rush forward on development in a way that is ambiguous is the wrong choice for that area.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, having completed discussion, we have a vote, all in favor of including the language as, but were you going to amend the language, Chris?
Yeah, I would propose the amended language as drafted here on the screen, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all in favor of the language on the screen? Please say aye. All oppose?
Aye.
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 Those, those are ayes to being opposed or being in favor?
I haven't voted because I'm not sure how this, I'm not understanding it that clearly.
I would like to make a motion.
Well.
To leave the language as is.
Commissioner Greengold, go ahead, please.
I, I'm just confused, Chris, why we have to change the language, the original language? What, what was wrong with that original language? I'm, you still didn't clarify that to me, I'm sorry.
Well, the, the, chapter five is the land use section and it provides three layers of approaches to dealing with development or redevelopment within the, in flood zone areas. And what is called layer two is probably the most significant. And it's areas that are going to have impacts, but they're on an existing public road. The impacts can generally be mitigated, they're not as severely impacted as, say, areas that we would call resource conservation. An example of this would be, for instance, that, that, that open space on Maryland 261, uh, just south of North Beach, which has been talked about as a site for a townhouse community. Forgotten the name of Stinett's Place, just, we heard a lot of testimony about that. Under this proposal as drafted, there wouldn't be any, you would continue the moratorium that's in place now affecting that parcel effectively. I mean, if the town council were to implement this recommendation with a, with a moratorium. I don't think it's needed or warranted, but is needed is just a, an analysis of the issues and to ensure that the storm waters addressed appropriately, that flooding is mitigated, that buildings are elevated properly and that, you know, the various conditions that we consider are addressed. So, and that's what layer two of our recommendations suggest you do, that you do a robust analysis of the conditions and that the developer really go above and beyond to prove to you that the project itself will fit compatibly within our efforts and won't make matters worse in terms of flooding. So, the, there, you know, there's a, this is, these are not, we're not just talking about areas that are at severe risk of flooding, like the lower end of, beyond the end of Harbor Road, for instance, where wetlands are encroaching and all that. We're talking about upland areas that are, generally speaking, capable of having some development. And the land use recommendations that are in the plan already have already reduced the intensity of that development. So I just think it's just a reasonable basis, a re, is a reasonable change to make in light of the protections that are already built into the plan.
I don't know why we would overturn something that said, that the Maryland Department of Planning said.
Let's find that.
Page forty-nine and fifty recommended preventing development in areas that will be inundated and postponing development in the three vulnerability zones until detailed plans are developed. All these recommendations are strongly supported. Why would we overturn Maryland Department of Planning's recommendation here?
Okay, the discussion is over. We, everybody's had their say, I think all the points are clear. It was unclear to me who voted against this motion.
I did.
All right, Blackwell.
I did.
She brought, uh, motion fails, so we move on. We have to have four commissioners in favor to pass a motion, so with three against, that's, that's, uh, the motion fails. Okay? And then, uh, now, moving on to, uh, the spreadsheet that our town zoning administrator put together of, I believe, all the remaining comments that were made during the comment period. Beginning, I, I hope you've read the whole statement or the spreadsheet, so I, we won't go over that unless you need to. But I've tried to list just the issues that we need to decide in the chairman's list. And if you need additional information, it's on, on the spreadsheet and of course, we have the zoning administrator here to explain them. So, beginning with, uh, those comments, uh, I believe by Mr. Blitz, Ms. Lanham and Mr. Donovan, uh, the first one, do we have a consensus to discuss applying the RV2 land use category to the Stinett's Place property so that land might be developed in either single-family detached or single-family attached, like townhouses neighboring the property, which I believe is Seagate? Do we have a motion to, uh, accept this recommendation?
Chris, can you show us that on the map, please? The Stinett's Place, I didn't think was next to Seagate.
And, and to be clear, I, yeah.
It's a little off from it.
Um, I'll, I'll find it. Those are recommendations that I've pulled out of the comments, like, the, I've, in that chart that Larry mentioned, I listed all the various comments, all the actionable type of comments, then I offered some recommendations to move things along. So, that's not a specific recommendation that Mr. Blitz made, for instance, is all I wanted to say. Getting there. Okay, there's the map, Commissioner, and I could focus it a bit. And the, the parcels that we're referring to are, um, here. It might be more visible on a aerial photograph, so I, I'll pull that up.
It's currently zoned as, um, what is it currently zoned as?
Currently zoned residential village, uh, which would allow.
Residential village.
Townhouses.
Unbelievable.
Here are the parcels located on Maryland 261. You see the Seagate Townhouse Community is adjourned. I, I made the point then that, uh, was made during the hearings too, that these areas are adjacent to existing townhouses and candidly adjacent to quite dense, single-family development anyway, um, non-conforming development that couldn't be built today. Also made the point in my, uh, chart that, um, if this area is going to be developed as single-family detached or attached, attached, um, or townhouses essentially, in my view, would allow a little more flexibility to accommodate stormwater management and enhanced methods to address flooding and open spaces. And I like that, um, flexibility much better. If this is carved out into individual, single-family lots, we're going to lose the ability to capture some of those structural improvements on the site.
Okay, we, do we have a motion on this, uh, this size item?
Um, can I, oh, I will move, I will move it. I'll move it.
Mr. Green Gold moves to apply the RV2 land use category to what we are calling Stinett's Place property.
Right.
I accept that.
We have a second from Commissioner Rutke.
I, and I need to move it because I want to discuss, if you don't mind, Chairman Brown, I want to discuss, I want to ask Chris why he thinks you can, you can mitigate some of the flooding issues with, uh, more intense development. I'd like to hear what he has to say about that.
Okay. Chris?
Because the, the, the townhouse standards allow essentially clustering of the dwelling units. Rather than each lot being 6,000 squares feet, the lots are considerably smaller and you have a, an open space component. You know, as you know, most townhouse projects have the open space around it. And, um, so I'm, I, I think effectively that's how it would work. You'd have a, an open space component to this project that otherwise the open space would be in the backyards of the property.
Oh, gotcha, right.
And.
So is that part of our code?
Well, yeah, essentially, we have town, townhouse design standards. And even if it weren't, as a practical matter, uh, every townhouse lot would be smaller, of course, which would be freeing up more space for, um.
But there'd be more, correct? I mean, we're not really reducing impervious surface.
No, I think you are. I think you, you have the real potential to produce impervious surfaces. And more so than you would if you carved it up in single-family hats, lots. Potentially there may be more, but not many more. We're talking about perhaps one or two. I don't think this is a question of density, it's a question of flexibility and allowing the public's concern about dealing with sea level rise and flooding to be most able to be accomplished. It's, and if this were with squarely within an existing residential, single-family context, maybe you, you err on the side of compatibility, but the fact this is with single-family, this is with, it's a lot different and, uh, it's densely developed already. Anyway, so I just wanted to, actually, this is a matter we just needed clarity on and just wanted to bring it to your attention.
So right now it's RV and he, and they want to move it to RV2, or you want to move it to RV2?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm suggesting that and that would be the means to achieve the comments that they've offered in the planning commission.
Wasn't that the area that we originally talked about as parkland or no? We didn't talk, I don't, we didn't talk about that as open space because of the flooding issues?
No. No.
We didn't, we never talked about that for those parcels?
We did talk about that.
We did in the very beginning, I mean, a couple of years ago, Jan, before you were on the planning commission, I was discussed as a possible park area. But the planning commission had a bit of a change of heart on that and basically opened up or changed, took a different approach to say, we're not going to identify a specific location for a park, um, but we're going to say that the town council should act when property becomes available, or some other language like that, to deal with parks. But the reality is, if, uh, you could have a, a standard in the town's code that said a certain amount of open space is required for every residential unit, not unheard of. And it certainly is a, a type of regulation that would be consistent with this plan. And that, and then you could accommodate perhaps a small park area on that parcel. Certainly couldn't do that if it was a single-family type of setup, I just don't think it works. But you could carve out a small pocket park, uh, you could require it.
Wouldn't include that in the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, so if we're going to make decisions based on this extra open space, then maybe we should have that in the plan.
It's, it's in the zoning ordinance now, a, a townhouse project has to provide open space, um, but if you wanted to reinforce that, I don't know quite where I could work on some language to figure out where to put it in the plan.
Is there feedback on somebody's, on somebody's computer? I'm getting feedback from some noise, Chairman Brown. Is anybody else hearing it or is it just me? Okay, it's gone now. It's gone now, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Brought, do you have any comments on this topic?
Um, frankly, I'm, I'm confused by the, the whole, the idea of now we could possibly build, it was, I thought we had restricted development there and now we are opening that up and possibly parkland, so I, I'm confused about what we're, what we're attempting to do here.
The RV, uh, one zone is now the recommended land use category for this property. And in the RV1, um, the planning commission has said only single-family detached housing is allowed. So as things stand, this property could be developed with a single-family lots. Each lot would have to be at least 6,000 square feet and 50 foot wide. So perhaps it's 60 foot, I can't quite remember right now, but, uh, the, the alternative, in my view, is that it could be developed with single-family attached, uh, units, uh, townhouses, um, like the units right, like the front onto this property, uh, in which case, I, I'm encouraged in thinking about this, that that may provide the plan or the, the town with more flexibility to deal with issues like flooding. Because townhouses are by nature clustered, leaving more open space.
Chairman Brown?
Yes. Commissioner Rutke.
Um, the state recommendation that, that I think about when I think about this property is that every time they turned around, they were wanting denser, not denser housing, but affordable, work, worker-friendly and that are eliminating townhouses and duplexes and accessory apartments was severely limiting, um, growth for people that, that have incomes that are not as high as many of them. So, you know, the, the, the state was very strong about that and, and I, I agree. I, it makes sense to me, what Chris has proposed.
Okay, do we have any other comments before we vote?
Um, the only comment I might have is, since we did come and carve that whole area out as, um, RV1, I guess you might say, it was to give some compatibility to the type of housing that surrounds it. And that entire area is single-family homes, uh, so.
No, the.
Am I wrong?
It's surrounded by townhouses.
Oh, it is surrounded by, I'm sorry.
On two sides, on two sides.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I, I stand corrected, thank you. Okay.
Uh, you can see there in the picture, you can see the townhouses, Seagate is where it's at.
So, um, okay, so then, going back to what Chris was asking then or suggesting that we, uh, encourage a carve out of parkland, how can we, uh, include that in the language? Is there any way to include that in the language or we went ahead and changed it if that was the case, Chris? Can we do it here?
No, I think you do it in the community facilities chapter, um, where we talk about parks. I mean, obviously, we, we have that language already when we talk about adequate public facilities and we have, even Jeff Foltz referenced this comment actually, as a tangent, by saying, what incentives are you giving developers to actually deliver the public facilities that we say we want? This is an example, it hadn't occurred to me yet, but that's how you link back to Mr. Foltz's comments. Flexibility in the design of development allows for public resources to be provided. Even Mr. Donovan mentioned that tonight, he talked about how doing stormwater management, uh, is something that can be achieved when you have development. And actually, that's what happens when we see the development happen, whether, no matter what type of development it's going to be, it's going to deliver a benefit to, uh, area stormwater management, um, with the new regulations and just, which is a plus. So anyway, so I think in the facilities chapter, community facilities chapter, we could add a statement that says, um, we should adopt a specific standard for, um, the square footage of open space required per new dwelling unit. So that when projects, housing projects are built, they deliver a meaningful open space for the residents, uh, the new residents.
So what would be a reasonable, um, open space requirement?
Anywhere from 500 to 1,000 square feet per dwelling unit. I mean, if you begin thinking about some of the nicest parks and plazas you've been to, uh, you know, maybe they're 5,000, 6,000 square feet in size, really quality landscaped benches and shade trees, place for people to gather. So you really don't need much. And in, in a town like ours where there's not much land available, adopting an approach like that through zoning, man, would really be beneficial, would help us shore up our deficiency in, in critical park space. Would help us shore up our deficiency in critical park space.
All right, so we have the one statement, but it doesn't include anything about carving out open space. Does anybody want to address that?
Can we amend the motion, Chris, to include the language that you just referred to in the other chapter? Can I amend that motion to include that? That the developer, if we allow for this to be the RV2 designation, that the developer would be required to include a certain size park area, either, you know, well, a park area?
Yeah, I think that's fine. And I think it's better stated as more of a general statement that new development will deliver. You know, rather than saying this developer will do it. It's...
Okay.
New residential development will deliver open space on the lot that will address the town's park deficiency and provide amenities for the future residents.
Okay.
That's fine. I could find the right place to add that in the document.
Sharon, is there a way that we can make that motion so that you can add that to the minutes?
Yeah, you can amend that motion.
I would like to amend the motion and to include the language that Chris is offering with regard to any new development. More than a single-family home would include parkland, a certain size amount of parkland. I don't know how we do that, Chris. Or if you and Sharon can come out and word that correctly. I don't know, can we vote on something like that?
Sure, and I think we're going to meet again, and then we're going to have the final language. I mean, there are a number of technical changes you have to see, too. So, but I have enough to go on. And the only thing that just gave me pause is that you said more than single-family. So you're suggesting that a single-family detached, you wouldn't require open space for that? I think you would require open space for every new rep...
Okay, then any new development. I just... So that's not referring to any infill? That would be... Or would that be infill or just any new development period? Any new development period, I guess, is what...
I think you treat both developing the same.
Okay. All right, perfect. Perfect. Okay, I stand with my motion then. And is there a second to that particular motion? I guess we have to have a second for the amended motion.
I don't hear a second. So we will vote on the motion as...
Wait, wait, wait.
Commissioner Rutke.
Cindy observed... Anyway, what I'm trying to say is, I was on mute, but I agree with that. I will second her motion. And I'm sorry, I was on mute. And in trying to get my act together, I about cut everybody off, so.
Okay, we have a motion to amend, and a second on that motion. Is there any further discussion?
I support the discussion. I don't know what the motion is, but I think that it's a general idea. I support it.
Okay, as I understand it, the language that we have here in the chairman's list, and then it's going to be, we will hear at the next meeting, language to include some requirement for open space related to development. Is that right, Chris?
Yes.
And that is in an area that would also need to provide some kind of flood information and mitigation, correct?
You're asking if, in its place, this particular property would require further flood mitigation? I think my guess is that comes out when a development plan comes in. Chris?
Yes, that's right. My guess is that stormwater management's being trickier there than it would have been 10 years ago, 20 years ago.
I mean, this is in the critical area.
It is, yes.
And some of it is in the critical buffer zone, as I understand it. So there are several things, several hurdles that have to be overcome. All right, so we have the motion on to apply RV2 land use category to what we've seen on the map as in its place property. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we have four in favor. The motion passes. Moving on to allow, number two, allow flexibility in the application of height limits so alternative housing types were permitted can be provided to meet the needs for apartments, condominiums, senior housing, provided such housing would not create incompatible relationships with adjoining uses. Chris, you want to amplify on that?
Yes, sure. And I'm not suggesting that the planning commission retract its stated policy about 35-foot height limit. I think that's... If the planning commission wanted to have that discussion, I can assist in having that discussion. But I doubt that you're there. But in light of the state's comments, which were candidly quite significant on the issue of housing, and it just reflects what the state law is that's existing now.
Yep.
And in the light of good planning practice, too. And for that reason, I need to say that having a variety of housing types within a community is really important. Every community is different. Everybody can satisfy that goal on some level. Some find it more difficult than others, but it is something that is worth aspiring to. After all, we're deciding who can live in our community and who can't. Where is this possible to accommodate more units within a building and still fit compatibly within the context of the town? I just don't see that there's a basis for preventing that, particularly since or when the public facilities and services are adequate or could be made adequate. And I just thought I'd mention that some communities do this through a thing called a residential transition zone. So again, only where alternative types of housing are permitted. And we're not talking about where they're not permitted, but where they're allowed, a community say, "Okay, you can go up to a higher level, provided you provide a transition between your property boundary and your building, so that the adjoining single-family residence, if it is a single-family residence, is not impacted or provided that the character of the community at large is not changed at all." That's just one approach. So that, for instance, a developer could deliver a senior housing project or an assisted living facility or a condominium project or deliver several affordable units within a larger complex of buildings. All those are kind of achievable if there's flexibility in the standards. 35 feet can be quite restrictive, particularly when you're trying to address issues like having a variety of housing types. So I don't know what that standard is right now. And I don't know where it would be most applicable. But I do know having some language in a comprehensive plan that signals to the elected officials that they ought to be open to having flexibility in designing their standards is a good thing generally. It could be abused if it's not respected. I doubt that any recommendation coming out of your plan that offers some recommendations for flexibility like this would be abused. I think you're going to follow up with really tight regulations. So I would just suggest that you be open to that. And if you are, I could draft some language that talks about different ways of providing for flexibility to accommodate something like this. As a practical matter, right now, the only areas where housing would be allowed, you know, new housing, would be the RV2 area. And again, that's quite limited. And someone would have to aggregate some real land area in order to do something other than a single-family house. And if you were able to get up a little higher without impacting anything, you could get a couple more units into a project, which would meet a housing need, so.
All right, so I guess the question is, does the commission want Chris to spend some time putting together some language on flexibility? Or are you of the mind that it should remain the same?
No, I personally would like to see Chris craft the language that would allow this to happen.
All right, Commissioner Greengold?
I think we are opening ourselves to allowing all kinds of abuse in the marine area. I think that if you want a senior housing, which I think, you know, every town needs senior housing, I think the 35-foot height limit allows for at least two and sometimes three levels of senior housing, which is perfect. You don't want any more than two levels to be perfect senior housing. But I really don't see where we need to go above the 35 feet. And I think once you start opening up, you allow for all kinds of abuse. That's my feeling.
Okay, so that's a no. Commissioner Blackwelder?
I don't hear you, Lori.
Commissioner Brolle?
I am opposed to it. I think right now, I understand Chris's point about the flexibility, but I think it's... There's already, we get a lot of pushback right now about the 35-foot limit, and I think that's going to continue. And I think that I agree. Two levels is, you know, is high enough. And we're going to lose the... Even though it's in a very finite area of RV2 only, I think we're just going to lose landscape and view. And I want the 35-foot restriction. I wouldn't like to see a change.
Okay, that's two opposed. And Commissioner Blackwelder hasn't spoken yet, but we can't discuss anything with two people, with two commissioners opposed. So I would suggest we move on unless Commissioner Blackwelder wants to weigh in.
No, I'm of the mind of Cindy and Kathleen that we are not ready to write the code that will allow this in a way that it doesn't get abused. And I'm happy to keep the 35 feet. And it's after we pass this comprehensive plan, and we want to work towards real regulations and good, solid code that might allow for something else, then we can discuss that, not in the context of this comprehensive plan. I'm happy to leave the 35 feet.
All right, so there's a no on number two. Number three, as a matter of planning policy, the plan could leave open the possibility of housing at the intersection of Harbor Road and Bayside Road, where sea level and flooding risks are not significant. We're supporting commercial uses. Boat slips and public infrastructure are already in place. Chris, do you want to describe that further?
Well, I think it speaks for itself. That particular area of the town is not particularly vulnerable to sea level rise. It's already at a higher elevation. And our plan does want to bring about more vibrancy in the area of where our downtown is, our harbor area. And one way you do that is through a mix of uses, including residential. Where there's residences, that's where people live. And you've already eliminated the ability to go up. So we're talking about low-rise, you know, 35-foot height limits. There already are townhouses next to this project. Or the project next to the site is already a multifamily development, townhouse project, captain's quarters. So to me, I don't see the rationale for doing it for prohibiting housing, particularly in that particular part of the community.
Okay, and you're saying the current plan prohibits housing at the intersection of Harbor Road and Bayside Road?
The current draft includes in the implementation section a statement that says, "Remove all housing from the maritime area or maritime zone or maritime district."
Okay, is there a motion to open the possibility of housing at the intersection of Harbor Road and Bayside Road? Hearing complete silence? I would say we move on to number four. "If the plan keeps its policy in favor of 35-foot height limit, the commission can consider a statement to the town council suggesting it reserve flexibility, at least in maritime and commercial zones, so that flood protection elevations can be achieved while accommodating redevelopment, rebuilding, as may be needed in the future." Is there... I think, Chris, I'm not sure there's anything you want to add to that, is there?
No, no, no. And we've talked about this before. I think I suggest that it is a positive statement, but it would require a change to the way the draft is, or it needs some type of statement. Maybe the way that Lori Blackwelder's talked about it already is something that you will address. I'm hopeful that someone doesn't always have to demonstrate that they have a severe hardship in order to, you know, develop a project that might be fantastic for the community. I know the 35-foot height limit is solid. In fact, something lower than 35 feet might be advisable in some portions of town. So keeping open the discussion of height limit to work at a kind of a customized approach to height limit is probably the best thing. And whether it takes place right now or later, I would encourage the commission to keep an open point of view on that particular question, particularly when it comes to dealing with these issues of sea level rise and flooding.
How would the town council do something in this code that says, on the one hand, the 35-foot is the height limit, and on the other hand, there's flexibility in it? How would that work?
It might say you can... If your house is destroyed by a flood or your business is destroyed, you can build back to provide the same square footage that you lost, which means that you have to build above the flood plain, the new flood elevation. If you build at the new flood elevation and replace what you lost, there's a real potential you're going to be over the 35-foot limit. So the town council would have to have language in the code that made it clear that those people affected that way would have the ability to go over that 35-foot limit.
Okay, is there any... Is there a motion here? Is there any interest in further discussion? I see a shaking head at the top of my screen.
Correct.
Commissioner Brolle, Commissioner Blackwelder, Commissioner Rutke?
No. Or Commissioner Brolle?
Okay, in any case, that's two out of five, and that is below the threshold.
Right. No.
Okay, let's see. Moving on to the number five on the list, there are other comments. "Maintain the draft plan's resource conservation designation on the southwestern tip of the Fishing Creek Marina property and maintain the draft plan's recommendations that low-intensity and water-related non-residential use may continue there." Chris, you want to make sure we understand exactly what you're...
Yeah, this would be no change. It just, I just wanted to try to address each of the points, the major actionable points that were made. And I could have simply said, "Number five, no change." But I just wanted to restate... I could have simply said, number five, no change, but I just wanted to restate what the current recommendations are.
Okay. I don't see anyone asking to discuss that further, so let me move on to Mr. Olekson. As I read it, he said, no change to the land, land map is recommended, and then he. There's a description there of his property one and property two, which, as I read it, doesn't require any change. To afford the uses that he desires. Is that correct?
Mr. Olekson was representing Bobby Abner and that property and was recommending that. Was recommending that the commission change the land use designation for two of the parcels. That comprise the Abner land holdings. And my recommendation is is that the commission not make those changes, that it keep the plan the way it is. And the rationale is really related to flooding, sea level rise, and these are the lowest areas. Most inundated and impacted by sea level rise, so.
Um, but in your spreadsheet, as I think I just copied it verbatim. The uses that he that are already approved. Uh, are accommodated under the plan's resource conservation designation.
That's right. I mean, the 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 properties being used in Marina and fishing and crabbing. Uses, storage related to that and movement of goods associated with that. And obviously, it's tied to the water and those can continue the way the plan is drafted.
But you're, I guess what he's guessing is they have other ideas in mind. For that property and he wants to increase or expand the potential uses?
It it wasn't clear to me that in the comments, but I I would presume that that's what. He was getting at. But it, no proposal was made in the written comments or the verbal comments at the public hearing.
There was actually a proposal made by him. Um, he had a map proposal. Uh, that he presented. With the changes that he requested, and I would I would just say that we are doing a flood plan. We are hyper focusing on that area, and I think it would be fair to. Within the. The context of evaluating that flood scenario and the entire maritime district that we. Get the stakeholder engagement of the landowners of all of those parcels, regardless of their. Positioning in that land. They were brought in in the IDA. Previously. I. It's it's hard for me to see us write off half of somebody's parcel and then say the parcel next. Next to it, we're arguing that we should build it up higher. I just think that all of those parcels should be included in the evaluation of the flood area. Period. I don't know how much of his parcel we're writing off, but I think it's a lot of it, and and that was his. His complaint.
I'm totally confused.
Um, we should find his his comment. He he submitted a map that illustrated what his comments were. I wonder if Sharon has the, do you have that handy, Sharon?
No, I don't. I have it here with me if I'm capable of sharing my screen.
Uh, Mr. Olekson is on the line there. Maybe he can speak for himself.
That, I appreciate that, Commissioner Brown. Um, you know, I appreciate everybody's time tonight. I know it's late, so I'll try to keep it quick. You know, earlier in the evening, you know, Commissioner Blackwell, Blackwelder and Mr. Jakubak, you had a discussion about. Changing the underlying land use of a property is kind of becoming a taking of land and and Mr. Jakubak even kind of acknowledged that, that somebody could be making that argument. And and I guess I'm here to kind of make that argument on the behalf of Mr. Abner. I'm trying to share, but I guess, Chris, I don't know if you can switch that over to me.
Yeah, one minute, Tony.
Okay.
There you go, sorry.
Appreciate that. So so my name is Anthony Olekson. I'm a professional engineer. With about twenty years of experience in land planning, land development. And the exhibits that we have here show. The properties that are in question. So there's there's five properties that Mr. Abner owns here at the very west side of Harbor Road. So all the properties are currently served by a public road. They're served by public water and sewer as it is right now. The the current overlay zoning for this is all maritime for all five of the properties as it's highlighted right here. Uh, the proposed comprehensive plan changes the land use of the last two properties here. From maritime to resource conservation in. In the comprehensive plan, it states that the purpose of resource conservation is to protect. Natural resources in sensitive areas from the impacts of development. But as you can kind of see here, under underneath of this green hatching is the outline of what has already been developed, is already is a paved parking lot. So I don't believe there's anything that we're trying to protect underneath that green overlay that's that hasn't already been developed, and that. That was part of what our proposal was, was recognizing. That the surrounding marshland is, there's no intention of trying to develop that land. But trying to keep the capabilities of of the development of what has already been. Disturbed or has already been developed out there. Um, another point I'd just like to kind of touch on is Mr. Jakubak mentioned about water quality. So part of redevelopment in the state of Maryland requires treating what is a water quality. Component of anything that disturbs more than five thousand square feet of what is an already developed area. So the, but realistically, the only way to improve water quality of the runoff that's coming off of this property is to actually. Have it redeveloped at some point in time. Now, there's no plans to to redevelop anything right now. What we're asking is that this line just be. Readjusted to take into account where the marshland is and where the develop, developable area already is is today. Um, to allow, you know, Mr. Abner to continue to use that property, so. And and that's what, you know, I think that's, I have my notes here, so just kind of wrap it up with that is. Is, you know, the proposed change in land use, if it's as, if it's adopted as it's proposed right now. Would unreasonably prevent Mr. Abner from using his property for what is the intended purpose, right? What what is the purpose that is out there today? Um, and I know you mentioned as well, it's being used for. For commercial fishing and charter, but. It it is a maritime use and changing that use is a down zoning of that property, it is a taking of that land, something that's already been developed at one point in time. So, you know, for me, them making the argument is that it's devaluing that property, which he's owned for for decades and has already developed. And has put measures into raise sea walls and prevent it, you know, to lift it out of flood zones to allow it to be developed in the future.
Okay, so you've heard Mr. Olekson. Um. Chris, you want to reply to that in any way?
Yes, sure. Okay, Tony, if you could just drop the share.
Yeah.
For a moment.
Sorry, Chris, I'm looking for the control.
Okay, yeah.
There it is.
Great. Okay. So this is just one of the resources that we relied on for the comprehensive plan and addressing. The approach to flooding and sea level rise. This is the area that's. At question here. In twenty fifty, it's predicted to have a. The the region's expected to have a two point one foot sea level rise. Uh, over the year two thousand level and. If that comes to pass, then it certainly looks like we're headed in that direction. We can expect this area to be open water. Right, unless substantial. Infrastructure is built to protect it. Um, and not just to protect it from Fishing Creek on this side, but on the marsh side as well and on the point, so ringing it in. A seawall would probably be the only thing that would be possible. And yet the land is subsiding generally would require a great deal of fill. To make this all work. Um, and for what purpose? The purpose would be to allow something that doesn't already happen on the property. The purpose would be to allow development. Because under the current. Proposed laws, the plan's structure now, the uses on this property could continue in perpetuity. As long as the the owner wanted to maintain the land, it could still be used for Marina and fishing and. Those types of coastal activities. Uh, what the proposed plan does, though, is say, a hotel would not be permitted, a housing complex would not be permitted. A restaurant would not be permitted, those types of more intensive developments, so. If the planning commission were to change its perspective on this particular property, which is. Among the most severely impacted by sea level rise, I think it would need to reconsider how it addresses others that are. Addressed in the same way throughout the plan.
So, Chris, if I can ask a question here, you're saying that the use as a parking lot, the use of. Of the docks and piers that are along Fishing Creek. Uh, are all protected in perpetuity, I think you said?
Uh, that's certainly the way the draft plan reads. It's meant to, in fact, this has a number of locations that. Marina-type operations are permitted uses, and when the. Zoning ordinance is amended and draft or drafted, the planning commission will, you know, obviously need to. Draft the right language to make that come to pass. Um, but that's the intent of the plan.
Could Mr. Abner put a seawall along there to protect both sides of that property and raise it? So just looking at the Rod Reels property at the, to the right of that. Uh, of course, by this drawing, it looks like they would have to do the same thing.
In fact, this drawing. The the data for this drawing was compiled after they wrote elevated the seawall along Fishing Creek. So in 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 actuality, the the amount of blue on this particular map for this property is probably substantially different than. Uh, because of the improvements they did there. So yes, if Mr. Abner built a seawall along both sides or all three sides of this to shore it in and then raise the land. It could be. I mean, that's that's essentially what they could do, but but the way the plan.
That would be permitted under the current current proposal.
Yeah, it could be permitted under the current proposal, and the the proposal suggests that the town do a study for. Flood resiliency and the recommendations for seawalls and and other types of improvements come out of that plan. Uh, so that everyone's building to to a same basic standard or the same approach. But yeah, as it's as it stands, the property could be protected. Through flood control measures. In fact, the Mr. Abner has made changes along this area. He's filled in the. The inlet, you might remember, that was part of the site plan, the planning mission approved. And to make that a space available for parking.
Okay, are there any other questions from other commissioners?
Um, I have a question. You know, it's it's the area is already, I mean, even the current Abner's parking lot is flooding out. During a, just a moderate rain. I was just there the other day when it was raining. I couldn't even park there. So I guess my question is, if you can build seawalls, don't the seawalls then, Chris, push water to the other side over into the? If you go back to that same picture, okay, wouldn't a sea, wouldn't it? Okay, if, let's just say they were extend some some walls, wouldn't larger seawalls just push water into the other area? Uh, the housing area across the way, or, I mean, when does a seawall then impact other areas, I guess is my question?
Well, it it does kind of in principle, but you have to consider the context in the the entire area that's. In a naturalized condition here. If this were already a very narrow, channelized. Drainage way or 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 flood way and you. By building seawalls, you would displace the energy onto other properties, but this area is. Sizable, quite substantial, so the extent to which any seawall here would affect the outcome of anything else in this broad area. It's just hard to quantify that. I don't think it would be significant in this particular area. Uh, up here, maybe, you know, in a more enclosed area, I think an engineer could probably. Point to more specific impacts. Out here, I I think it's. Less significant of the of a concern.
Oh, Commissioner Greenwall, to to your point about being in the parking lot the other day, there there actually already is. A permit application that's being submitted to to further raise that seawall out there to do that. To to take care of that issue, so. Mr. Abner is continuing to work to try to protect his property, and I think that's really what it is, that, you know, that's what we're trying to get to, is we want to give him the capability. To protect his property and continue what is the current zoning or overlay use of that property if he so chooses to. I mean, the the map that Chris had put up is, it shows actually that whole townhouse. Uh, area being flooded, so, you know, inevitably to protect even what is the surrounding residential areas there, there's going to have to be some type of seawall. And cooperation with what's going on there. So if Mr. Abner decides to raise his seawall, he actually only improves the situation. For those townhouses that are adjacent there. Um, typically, when you're looking at runoff coming off of a property like that. You're still trying to direct the water to where it's going, so you wouldn't be directing any runoff from Mr. Abner's property back, which is actually kind of uphill. Towards the, towards the townhouses that are there. We would still be trying to push water out towards the creek. So, you know, when when you do the kind of land development, you're raising seawall, and you're trying to maintain, you know, first rule was always that, is maintaining your your drainage pattern so that you're not impacting another. Landy, landowner. In this case, protecting Mr. Abner's investment. Um, and what is the value of his property and the capabilities of his property today by maintaining that, and again, we're not asking for. You know, if the marsh area that's shown here gets put into conservation, I think everybody agrees on that part of it. He's not looking to go out into the marsh, fill in wetlands. And create what would be more of a problem. He's just looking to to protect the investment in the property that he's had there for decades. By maintaining what is that that developed area that you're seeing here as being maritime. And the marsh area can go to resource conservation because we believe that's consistent with what the intent is of of the comprehensive plan. But in order to protect that or even in order to continue to use it for a parking lot, if it just stays a parking lot to support the. The rec, you know, recreational fishing that's going on now, a seawall is going to have to be constructed there no matter what. So that's a significant investment to put into a property just to keep it as a parking lot that may not allow him to use it for whatever his future thoughts are for it. And that's that's all been part of the the process that we've been kind of working with this, is he's kind of broken it down into segments. To increase that 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 seawall around his property and kind of taking bites of that elephant one at a time. to increase that seawall around his property and kind of taking bites of that elephant one at a time.
Okay, are there any other questions here?
I guess, I'm sorry Chairman Brown, I guess the only thing more would be if you raise it for, okay, so Chris, on the flood maps that we looked at, doesn't it keep going up? So in 2030, it's one foot up and in 2050, it's two, I mean, doesn't it keep going up? It doesn't stop. So if he builds a wall, he's going to have to keep building the wall up higher and higher. Is that, is that what we're looking at to try and protect that strand of parking area?
But as I understand it, Chris, the current zoning, the current proposed zoning would allow him to continue raising it if he had the funds and inclination to do that, is that correct?
Right, right, yeah, so the question is-
Well, it's kind of a moot point.
It could be raised, Cindy, it could be raised. And of course, once the plan is done for sea level rise and flood resiliency, we'd hope that there's compliance with the plan. We would work with all the property owners to make sure that we're all sort of on board with where the town and private people, investor fundings to protect the property. So it's not a question of protecting the property. The question is the use that takes place there. And whether this area eventually reverts to something that's is, or it retains its kind of maritime type of use where flooding can take place without significant impacts.
And your point, Chris, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'm just wondering if we redrew that area behind Fishing Creek Marina. Where there's a parking lot now. I mean, it seems to me that this entire area is flooded. It's all flooded in the same way. And all the property owners want to do the same types of things. And so my general comment is that we need to address this area robustly with stakeholders and residents and people that know a lot about flooding. And come up with what is right for everybody. Because I see a strange lines of where you know, it's, it's a different level of flooding that doesn't make logical sense to me when I look at this map. I see. You know, we have that, that housing area and the parcel after that. That's not drawn as flooding in the same way. There's a weird point coming out of it that's saying that that particular area isn't flooded. We know for a fact that that entire parking lot behind the water park is completely flooded in the rain or in the, you know, in a flooding event. So, I mean, I understand what Chris is saying that that area is very vulnerable, but all of these areas are very vulnerable. And I think that a hyper focus on this area with this flood plan is required and a very back and forth dialogue with the stakeholders here and residents. Residents don't want to see high rises here. Is something that would be appropriate. Rather than just rezoning everybody for resource conservation.
Well, theoretically, Chairman Brown, if I might, theoretically, if that is kept marine, I mean maritime, I'm sorry. Then theoretically, that could be infilled and you could build commercial along that strand. I mean, that's, that's essentially what could occur if it was rezoned back to the maritime. So I think what we originally said was if we could see by these maps that it was going to be flooded to the point where it would be dangerous or it would be onerous to develop. But yet we'll, you know, we go ahead and we go back to maritime on this area. We'll be back to square one where we didn't want to have any, any possible construction or at least intense construction on areas that were going to be flooded. So I'm now confused on to why we would want to to reevaluate all these flood zone maps and say, yes, okay, we made a mistake here. I mean, what Chris presented about what's going to be flooded is a very important point is that do we want to have any development other than the parking lot that's already there? You know, maybe we should just keep it the way it is, keep it how we rezoned it and not change it. Yeah, go with Chris's recommendation on this.
Commissioner Greenwall, the only thing I would say to that is you have to allow the owner out there to make that determination for himself too, right? Is if he wanted to protect the property, and again, we're not talking about the area that isn't developed, right? We're solely focused on what has already had activity on it. If he wants to protect that property by investing in putting in seawall, which he's already raised out there a couple of times, right? So that was a question you brought up earlier. Is, you know, there is mechanisms to keep raising a seawall if necessary. I think what we're asking is to not change the zoning of the area that's already been developed so that he continued to use that in accordance with the maritime district and allow him the opportunity to invest in that property to put a seawall around it if he chooses to, to protect it from flooding. I mean, I think that's, that's really the issue for everybody that's in blue here is something's going to have to be done to protect all of these properties. And to Commissioner Blackwelder's statement is, you know, I think those owners and everybody are going to have to play together to protect their investment. Now needs to be decisions that are made by those folks versus doing it through a zoning change.
All right, so is there a motion to, for any action to change the planning, comprehensive plan?
I would make a motion to support at least the top portion on zone two of the map that he proposed.
What is your, I'm sorry Laurie, what is your proposal?
So could somebody pull back up the map that Mr. Olleksun proposed?
Tony, can you put it up again?
I can.
Okay, thank you.
And if, if I don't get a chance to say, because I know you guys are getting ready to make a motion here. And I want to appreciate everybody taking a little bit of extra time to squeeze me in here tonight. So this, this is the proposal here is right now it's proposed that the entire parcel one and two that are labeled here would go to resource conservation. We're trying to find some compromise in the middle to say, you know, everything in the marshland would be resource conservation, everything that is currently developed, the development footprint that's there today would stay maritime as shown in this map.
Okay, so Commissioner Blackwelder proposes the, what looks like to me, number two in purple on the map remain in the maritime zone, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, except for the person yelling in the background. All right, all in favor of changing that, that purple section, which is shown as number two on Mr. Olleksun's map to maritime zone, please say aye.
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 All right, all opposed, please.
Aye. I should say no.
No, all right, and Commissioner Beralt, I haven't heard from you lately. So we have two ayes, it takes four to pass the motion, so. You'll get another bite at the apple when it comes before the town council, Mr. Olleksun. All right, it is past the hour that I said I would put a motion to adjourn. I should point out that although it may be 9:20 in Chesapeake Beach here in Denver, it's 7:20. And I'm happy to go on. But, but anyway, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Hearing none, we continue. Okay. Next on our list from our zoning administrators spreadsheet. Mr. Grant Sonderstrom wanted to include raising stone revetments on page 49, among the list of shoreline protection actions. Do I have a motion to include that phrase, raising stone revetments on page 49?
What does he mean by bay crest? Chris, at bay crests, what is that?
I don't know where you are, we're on, under Grant Sonderstrom.
It says, focuses on wave action at revetments at bay crest.
Oh, you're on page 49.
I'm sorry, I'm on the spreadsheet and it says bay crest. Notes that waves are over the stone, revetments, raising the revetments would also address the sea level rise. But bay crest is referring to bay crest. Where is bay crest?
Okay, Chris, go ahead.
Just a minute, I'm gonna, are you looking at my screen now? Or, I have to share my screen again, okay, one minute. Oh goodness.
We're talking about, are we talking about the townhomes?
Yes.
Okay, we're talking about the townhomes, I didn't realize they called that bay crest.
Here on the screen, you'll right through here, Commissioner. That's the subject of that commenter's concern. Did you see that?
Yeah. Okay, I think, Mr. Chairman, may I, may I just have a comment I'd like to make? I'm thinking that we may have an issue all along there and don't we need to just address the entire area? I mean, we can't just increase it in one area, not in other areas, correct, Chris? How does that work? As far as where we need-
No, his concerns was localized, but our response is general. Because his concern is a generalized concern at the end of the day. And so
Okay.
I had the recommendation of doing just that. I suggest amending the section where it discusses the Board of Port Wardens under page 49.
Yeah.
To include raising stone revetments among the list of various shoreline protection actions that are, that we refer to. So his comment was spot on and it, there's no reason why it shouldn't be listed there. That's probably the approach they would use as that exists already.
Okay, so it is a general comment intended for the entire shoreline that has stone revetment. So do we have a motion to include that phrase on page 49?
I'll move approval on the statement on page 49.
A second, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Commissioner Blackwelder, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adding raising stone revetments to the list on page 49, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And Commissioner Beralt?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor, votes in passes. Moving on to Amanda Brown's. Suggest that the implementation chapter include a statement. And then she has a long statement, I can read it if you like.
Chairman Brown?
Yes.
Forgive me, this is Commissioner Beralt. I, my tablet died right before we were with Mr. Olleksun. So I'm sure there was a motion and my apologies for, I tried to get back as quickly as I could. But I had to quickly emergency plug in my tablet, so.
Just to fill you in, Mr. Olleksun had a section there that had been developed along Fishing Creek that he wanted to include in the maritime zone. We had two commissioners that opposed, two commissioners that favored, the motion failed. So that was not changed to maritime.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, so Amanda Brown says, wants to include a statement. Now, Chris, you don't say what the implementation chapter-
Yeah, and she, this is my draft of a statement, my suggested addition to the plan in response to her comments. And she's basically saying, you know, property owners should be provided an opportunity to discuss the impact of any rezoning that might happen. We're not talking about rezoning now, but when, when it comes time to adopt a new zoning map. So that's what this paragraph attempts to do, capture the essence of her comment.
And that seems to be consistent, Commissioner Blackwelder will correct me, I'm sure, but consistent with what she was suggesting that landowners be, property owners be consulted. But it seems to me that any zoning change has to have a public comment period. And that everybody gets a chance if they choose to make a statement. Does this imply that we, we would proactively go out and ask every adjacent homeowner or resident within that zoning change and get their comments on it, that it would require that?
It wasn't my intent to do that specifically, but some towns do do that, they'll send a letter out to everybody who might be the subject of a rezoning change or request to alert them specifically. Which I think is a very advisable thing to do, but I didn't say that specifically here.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to put some meat on the bones, if you will, understand what, what it was we're proposing since there is already required a comment period both at the planning commission and at the town council before zoning changes are made, correct?
Yes, there are two public hearings, that's right.
Well. So is there anyone who would like to step forward and make a motion to support adding this phrase, these changes as supported by Ms. Amanda Brown?
I make a motion to support it.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
All right, is there any further discussion?
I just, Chairman Brown, I would just like to comment that I think it's, although there are public hearings related to the comprehensive plan, I think sometimes people just miss the opportunity and they don't understand or realize the impact of what is about to occur in their own residence or area. And I think if they receive the notice that specifically identified to them and clarified this is going to happen and it could potentially have an impact for you. I think it's important. It reminds me of, you know, the building of the Rodden Reel. I mean, just the additional 12 rooms of late to the, to the compound has an impact to the Windward Key. And maybe it's obvious that there is building, but it might not be obvious how it, the impact of that development will be, will actually be realized. So I think it's, it's good. And then if the citizens, the, the town member wants to, I mean, they've received notice. If they still don't want to participate or weigh in on, on the impact of that, then there's nothing further you can do. But I think just to receive a notice in the paper or at Rollins that there's going to be a, uh, the comprehensive plan's going to be out even through the town. I think it might not immediately, uh, strike people that this is going to have a, a direct impact on them.
Okay, two comments. First, um, on, uh, as we go through these points, if you make a motion, doesn't mean that you have to vote for it. If, it may mean that you just want to discuss it. So a motion and a second. Uh, I'll just throw that out there. I don't, I don't, I don't encourage it or discourage it. But if we, if you're interested in just discussing it, I'd appreciate it if we had something on the record of what we're discussing. Okay. Uh, second point, uh, Commissioner Boral, do you want to amend this statement to be more specific that homeowners within a zone should receive a letter or be notified, uh, proactively? Uh, because I don't think the statement says that.
Yes, I, I, I believe it should be, uh, maybe, uh, clearly, more clearly identified as those impacted by a, a rezoning, uh, those immediately affected should be notified via, I, I guess, receive notice of, of the change. I don't know what, I, I'm reluctant to say via the mail because, I mean, there's so many forums that they could. They could receive it by email, they could receive it by mail. But I guess those directly impacted should receive notice of the pending, uh, change.
Okay, so Chris, you said some communities do this. If you could, uh, so I'm, I'm taking it that Commissioner Boral has, uh, recommended an amendment. Although we haven't had a second, do we have a second for that?
Uh, I'll second the amendment.
Okay, and so, Chris, could you, uh, put together something? I don't, I'd hate to, uh, tell the town you have to notify everybody, but suggest that, uh, notification to the residents affected. Uh, I guess that would go on the last part of this paragraph.
Uh, are you suggesting that I just, I make it known to the town that they, we prefer that they send notice out? Or are you suggesting that I change this paragraph somehow?
I'm suggesting, uh, if you, based on your experience with other, uh, towns that do, uh, send out a notice to property owners within a zone area, notifying them, not necessarily that they have to respond or that they, uh, have to, uh, you know, get a positive response that they've been notified, but just, uh, something a little stronger than providing an opportunity because they're already provided two opportunities at, uh, hearings.
Why not just say, uh, and that property owners be provided a notice of a proposed rezoning and an opportunity to discuss the impact?
Does that sound fair, Commissioner Boral?
Sounds perfect, thank you.
Okay, uh, so we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion?
Uh, the only question I would have is if, when would they be able to discuss it? When would we be able to change things if we wanted to change things? I mean, if we're at the end of this project, um, and they come out at the end of the project, how will we have time to then re-discuss it ourselves and then maybe make changes? Um, I'm trying to figure out how the logistics of this works. I mean, shouldn't they have been coming in all the way along? Man, I'm trying to figure this one out.
Well, we're talking about the, the zoning map here and making zoning map changes. Uh, and so in the same way that people commented on the comprehensive plan and you're discussing their changes tonight, making some changes, you would do the same thing when it came time to approve a zoning map?
Oh, okay, okay. All right, that's good. All right, thank you.
Okay, all in favor of the language as amended, be included in the implementation chapter, please say aye.
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 Okay, unanimous, all, the motion passes. Uh, next, Ken Miss Rasmussen. Um, uh, proposed language of paragraph on Brownies Beach, the town's only public beach. Uh, the only thing I, the thing I noticed is that we, at the November twenty-third meeting, already approved including an under, uh, environmental study to protect Brownies Beach, as I recall. So this is more just specific language. If you want to read through it and then if there's someone who would like to make a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the language inserted by Chris here, I guess.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Boral. Uh, any further discussion? I think we discussed this at the November third, twenty-third meeting, pretty soon. So, all in favor of including this language?
Aye.
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 Okay, unanimous, uh, motion passes. Moving on to the Maryland Department of Planning. Um, let's see, first one is to add, they want to add a recommendation since plan says residents from Summer City regularly walk to town. MDP suggests the plan include a specific recommendation to address providing the sidewalk from the south end of town to Summer City. That's not in our walkable communities plan?
It's not because it's outside the town boundary.
Right, right.
Okay, so, someone want to make a motion to include that recommendation?
I will make that motion.
Commissioner Blackwelder makes the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Boral seconds the motion, any discussion?
Okay, um, I just have to make it clear. So we're trying, we're going to then, my, um, tell me what we're, we're, we're going to be voting on here. Tell me exactly what we're voting on here. We're, this entire.
Yeah, where would this recommendation?
Number one.
Be?
Number one?
Under Maryland.
So you're talking about this entire, this entire, the, the committee, this entire thing that's written under Chris's comments?
The first dash.
Under Maryland Department of Planning.
Uh, Commissioner Brown, may I comment?
Yes, yes, this is the discussion period.
Oh, goodie. Um, what authority would we have to put a sidewalk from inside our town to an area outside our town? I mean, it, it, it sounds like something the county should do or, uh, it, it just doesn't seem appropriate to me that we would take on that responsibility and expense. So.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, I do not think we would pay for it. I think that, um, that the Maryland Department of Planning probably asked for the recommendation for a reason and that they won't be able to fund it unless it's somewhere.
Gotcha. That makes, that makes good sense to me. That's true of things, uh, that we were asking of Calvert County as well, that we have to get on the list of things that we want to accomplish or they just can't, they won't get done.
Yes.
I'm in, I get it.
Okay, any other, any other discussion?
So it would go, I'm sorry, so you're talking about a sidewalk that would continue from where they want to in, uh, on the, uh, west side of two sixty-one all the way up? Is that what we're talking about here or? I mean, it's, it's kind of vague. I'm trying to figure out what, what, is that what we're talking about?
About a safe way of travel for people from Summer City into town.
Okay.
I personally do not want my kids to run people over who walk there all the time. So if somebody could implement this sidewalk, I know I would feel better.
So you're suggesting, read a safe way for pedestrians to, uh, uh, transit from the south end of town to Summer City?
No, I would just suggest the, the language that the Maryland Department of Planning requested, which is how you wrote it. That's my motion to include that recommendation.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, any further? Nothing heard, all right. Do we have, uh, a vote, all in favor of this, adding this recommendation for a sidewalk from the south end of town to Summer City, please say aye.
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 It's unanimous, uh, motion passes. Second item under Maryland Department of Planning is, uh, the implementa, in the implementation section, add a reference to the Reinvest Maryland Toolbox, which provides information on over a hundred state and federal technical assistance programs for community development. Do we have a motion to include the Maryland, or Reinvest Maryland Toolbox?
Yes, I make the motion.
We have a motion from Commissioner Rutke, do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Greenfield, Commissioner Greenfield, second set, any discussion?
Uh, can somebody explain it to me a little bit about the Reinvest Maryland Toolbox?
Now, Chris, would you take that?
Uh, yeah, it's a, um, it's a kind of a clearinghouse of all the various programs that the state administers to assist, uh, local governments, counties, local governments with, um, projects that state has kind of a shared interest in. Um, so if you needed a, uh, technical assistance in, uh, deciding how to build a sidewalk, uh, to Summer City, uh, they have that program or a funding, uh, mechanism, uh, for channeling state and federal dollars to build connectivity. They would have it. So Reinvest Maryland is just a, uh, a, a useful site that allows for, you know, us to expedite things. Uh, I, I don't know how else to say it else. It's, it's just a useful site that consolidates all the various programs they work with.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of including the Reinvest Maryland Toolbox, reference to the Reinvest Maryland Toolbox in the implementation section?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all in favor, motion passes. Uh, next one, uh, Chris, if you can explain this one, fix the statement on page twenty-one of Appendix C, the connectivity study that reads all vegetation removal in the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area must be permitted.
Yeah, I, I'm trying to get back to that. I looked at it early on when we first got this comment. Uh, it, it seems odd that it, this statement says this. I'm not quite sure of the, the context. Uh, I'm trying to find that document again to refresh my memory. Um,
Maybe there's no, uh, individual removal of the cud too.
Uh, yeah. Um, trying to find that appendix, sorry, I.
Well, maybe it's, maybe the problem is when you say all vegetation must be permitted. All vegetation removal must be permitted, all trees, grass, flowers.
I mean, you can imagine what the Critical Area Commission thought when they saw the comments. I, I don't. I'm, I'm headed in the right direction here and get it.
Right, well, maybe while you're doing that, let's see.
Yeah.
Uh, and the last bullet from Maryland Department of Planning was to include in the implementation section coordination with the Calvert County Land Preservation Parks and Recreation Plan, which, uh, seems to me to be a no-brainer. Um,
Agreed.
Do we have anybody, uh, who will make a motion to?
I'll move, I'll move approval.
I'll second.
We have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of including in the implementation section coordination with the Calvert County Land Preservation Parks and Recreation Plan?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes. Okay.
Okay, I have the page up from.
Okay, thank you.
And, um, so we could all read this together individually to be fine that, the statement.
Uh, page twenty-one?
Oh, yeah, it's right here. Um, that, this is the first bullet point in this list.
Yeah.
On the right-hand side. This is, when working on pro, any project within the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area, there are several regulations and requirements that will have a direct effect on any proposed projects. The following are a few examples. All vegetation removal within the CBCA must be permitted. Uh, it's, you got some, some of the commissioners were on this task force. Uh, do, do you recall this ever being a, an issue? Like, you wanted to have this statement in? Strikes me as it's probably a typo.
No, it, it seems like maybe we could reach out to Melissa and see what regulation she seems to be referencing there and see if maybe it's worded different.
You mean Melinda Crowder?
Oh, you know what it is?
No, Melissa, Melissa from RK and K would have wrote that. Our, our, our group would not have crafted that statement.
Yeah, I, I know what it is, uh, actually. I could call her, it just occurred to me. But, um, it should say all vegetation removal in the CBCA must be mitigated. In other words, you got to replace it. If you take down trees, you have to replace it, one for one. And that's, I'm almost certain, uh, that's what she's getting at. And, um, she even goes on mitigation for, as a requirement for permanent impacts. That means if you're putting trails down or lot coverage, you have to deal with mitigation as well. But if, if the commission wants me to, uh, send her an email and ask her, um, or call her, I will, but short of that, that's, that's what they know.
You know, you know, it might be focused on the word permitted, meaning it must be approved and granted.
Yes.
I agree with that.
Chairman, yeah, actually, yeah, right.
That's what it is.
It's not permitted, it needs to be permitted.
Permitted. Very good.
Yes, yes.
Well, this being, uh, an appendix to our plan, can we change it in this document or?
Um, yeah, I, we could change it. Um, we could, we can modify it, uh, on the text, um, within the, on the document. So it's, anybody reads it will see it as changed.
Yeah, I don't know that it's even directing anything. It's really, it sounds like that paragraph is just describing regulations. So I don't even know that it needs to be changed because the way the paragraph's written is just basically telling people to be aware of regulations.
Yeah, I would err on the side of not having to change it. Um, but, uh, I think if people read it thoughtfully like the chairman does, you're going to come to that conclusion eventually, so.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, we've discussed it, all in favor of changing it? Uh, say aye. Hearing none, all opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So two are opposed, three are opposed.
Aye.
Uh, the motion to change it fails.
Leave it alone.
Uh, leave it alone. Um, Maryland Department of Environment, no, uh, the town planner, that's you, Chris. Investigate the comment about water resources element and we'll revisit the county's, uh, WRE before commenting on how to address this comment.
What the hell are they talking about?
Yeah, I, I'm not entirely clear on what they're talking about. In fact, one of the comments that came after this in their list seemed to have been written for Calvert County and not us. So I'm not quite sure. The county's WRE, Water Resources Element, was a major source for the way we drafted ours. So, um, and the state planning department didn't comment on this at all. It, it seems like an outlier. I've not contacted the county or MDE to see what they're thinking here. But I can, um, I just haven't done it yet. I, I'm just not totally clear on what they're suggesting. And it's certainly not something that's, I think, incumbent upon us to change. But I, and I just need to follow up with them. I haven't done it.
All right, uh, is there, does the commission want Chris to follow up on this?
Yeah.
Yes.
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 Three s's.
Okay, make it unanimous. Go ahead, Chris.
I'm going to.
Some more work.
All right, so, and you'll let us know at the next meeting what you found out?
Yep, yep.
All right, Maryland Department of Transportation, no changes were recommended. Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. They concurred, I guess, with, uh, MDP's comments, but otherwise had nothing to add. We've already done Maryland Department of Planning's comment. So moving, isn't, anybody have anything to add to that? All right, Maryland County Planning Department. We are down to the last three things on my list. So the adequate public facilities ordinance, which is on page 112, uh, paragraph, says, "No changes needed, however suggests that it include all the standard facilities, schools, parks, streets, water, and sewer." I don't have any opposition to that. Sounds like a reasonable idea. Anybody else? Anybody opposed?
I, I want to include it. I've, what are they saying? That we should include it more thoroughly than we did?
112 of our comprehensive plan.
The county's comments were, um, they would like us to specifically include the word "school" when we reference APFO. Obviously, the county maintains the school facilities. So it has an interest in, in, in making sure that enrollment is below capacity. So if we're going to do an APFO, they would like it to focus on schools. And, uh, my response was, yes, well, we're going to put schools and we might as well put all of the various facilities we, we would be, uh, addressing with an APFO.
I like that idea.
Okay, anybody?
Me too.
In favor?
Okay, hearing none, Chris, if you'll include that in that?
Yes, sir.
Paragraph?
Got it.
All right, uh, let's see. Suggest a ref, that a reference to the county land park be included in the impression chapter. We already voted on that.
Yep.
And the last bullet on my list is, uh, let's see. "No change to the joint planning area. The reference exhibited in the plan shows a three-mile radius only as a general and organizing concept. The actual boundary would be developed jointly by the three jurisdictions and should be based upon natural resources, not arbitrary, natural features, not arbitrary lines." Is there something that needs to change in the plan, Chris?
Nothing needs to be changed, but, uh, if we want to give the best deference to the county, I could add a note that attaches to this map that says this. I mean, so that we wouldn't propose that just an arbitrary three-mile joint planning area and say, "Take it or leave it to the county or the, or the..." I mean, but, uh, if, if we need to clarify that for everybody, a, a note like this would be helpful.
Okay, so you'll, you'll?
I'll annotate the, the map.
Okay, that is the end of my list. Are there any other items that the commissioners believe were brought up during the comment period that we need to address?
I have one. Um, can I speak?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Blackwelder.
So, um, one thing that the Maryland Department of Planning mentioned was the spatial, the spatially designated areas, that we didn't identify those. Um, and since those areas trigger funding, I would like to see us identify some of those areas. I can make a list for next meeting of what I think maybe some spatially designated areas should be. But one of them was that sustainable community boundary that doesn't include either Randall Cliff or the 200-acre parcel. And we need that designated as a sustainable, part of our sustainable community boundary.
Right, right, right. Agreed.
But there's a couple, yeah, there's a couple other ones that would also trigger some funding. And I, I can make a list if that's okay with everybody.
Let's see, going up and down? All right, so, uh, Laura, if you would please pass that to Chris, your list?
Okay.
And, uh, that being all the items, uh, unless I would suggest to the commission that the first item on the agenda for our next meeting will be to approve the comprehensive plan and submit it to the town council. And Chris, if you could, uh, will we be able, will we get a completed copy of it before we?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. And, um, I'm going to meet with Sharon tomorrow morning, uh, on the phone and figure out how we get this done most expeditiously. Put a few changes, so, uh, you need it, I'd say, a week before the meeting, right?
That would be good.
Yeah, so, um.
And the meeting is what, on the 20th?
26th.
On the 26th.
So let's get it to you by the 19th. That gives us, gives, uh, gives us two weeks.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so that'll be the first item on the agenda. The way I would see this going, we'll move right back into the zoning changes that Chris, we had talked about in, what, October, November? And you get back to work on those at the next meeting. The town council, I suspect, will need, will take, will need some time to digest this and, uh, make their changes, which hopefully will give us enough time to pass them, to them, the zoning changes that we would like to see made. Okay, uh, where's my agenda? I think the next thing is, uh, to adjourn.
Okay.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Aye, absolutely. Go ahead, Kathleen.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I will second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you for sharing this. Thank you, Larry. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, everyone. Denver.
Okay, stay safe in Denver, Larry.